We're going to call this regular board meeting of January 12, 2004 to order. May I have roll call, please?
Ms. White.
Present.
Mr. Mancavage.
Here.
Ms. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
Ms. Buckley.
Here.
Ms. Lanasi.
Present.
Ms. Ferrers, present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any changes on the agenda, Mr. Clark?
There are none.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as it is?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, what's the date here? December 8, 2003.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark, personnel actions.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Madam President, there are no personnel actions for tonight.
Mr. Ruth, here, bills for payment, please.
Sir Lieutenant Clark, President Lanasi, members of the Board of Education. We have for your review this evening, seven registers totaling $1,183,902.89.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I motion that we approve the bills for payment.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions on the bills?
I had a couple just questions on, let's see, one, two. I think it was the fourth register we had, page five. There was three items in a row dealing with Michigan State Police. And I was just wondering, was that dealing with some of the work they did as far as the classroom? When the science class did some things with the state police and forensics work? Because a couple of them, it says miscellaneous, and one it says teaching supplies.
This is the register of December the 19th?
Yes, 12/19/03, page five. And it's near the bottom, there were three items in a row.
The 21st century looks like the $39 item. The other two are debits to a revenue account, so we must be refunding some money. I'll have to look into that and get back with you.
Okay. And the same thing on the last register, page six, there was State of Michigan. It's like repair and maintenance, senior high, WIC North, and they all had the same amount of $25. Was that?
That's for the boiler inspections.
Oh, okay. So that was all the inspections they had to do when we pay each individual?
Yes, that's right.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. State financial update, I just wanted to chat for a moment or two this evening. The news from Lansing continues to be made day by day by day. They've talked about various prorations for this year. We were notified at one point in time, it was going to be $196 per pupil. We were notified another time, it was going to be approximately $100. And now we have been told it's going to be around $84. And that's subject to change. But around the $84 number, we're talking somewhere in the $425,000 to $450,000 shortage of funding for this school year from the state, from what we had expected to receive initially. So we are being cut that amount. Also, you'll notice attached to this, I attached a copy of the information relative to driver education. I'm not asking for you to take action on this, I'm planning on doing this administratively, but I think we will, at this time, be terminating our school-sponsored driver education program. It's happened to many, to many, many districts already. And it's become financially unfeasible for us to do it for this reason. The tuition that we're charging is already approaching very closely to the tuitions that are charged by the private schools. And we were getting a subsidy somewhere between $75 and $100 per pupil in the last several years. Our costs continue to rise, and it's very hard for us to be competitive with the private driving schools. And the main reason there is we have a contractual situation in terms of the teachers and what the teachers are paid compared to the private schools. And for us to even do a break-even program on this, it will be more expensive than what it would cost to go to a private driver education school. If you have particular feelings, I'd certainly like to hear them. And I'd like to offer the program, but I must also remind you that we are already looking at a $400,000 shortfall this year. We're also projecting the possibility, and the possibility is coming true, that we are going to be in a deficit at the end of this fiscal year. We've been trying to, in effect, use our savings account to maintain our programs as long as we possibly can. It's really going to be impossible for us to continue something that used to be totally and fully funded. No, it's going to be non-funded. It's not a non-funded mandate, it's just an opportunity that we probably can no longer afford to provide to our community. And I regret that very much. But for us to be competitive will be very difficult, and it'll, it will be a big-money loser. Because then, now we would be gambling on how many students we're going to get. Making it work would probably be above and beyond what we can respond to at this time. There, on Wednesday of this week, there will be another estimating conference to decide what they look, what the financial picture looks like for the next several months in the year. And then there's another revenue estimating conference in May. These revenue estimating conferences have a lot to do with relation to where the state is headed. I received something from our lobbyist today that said that the next year, even with all the cuts and everything that's happened this year, we're looking in our state budget, the total state budget, at approximately a $700 million shortfall. That shortfall can be met by the economy picking up and things improving considerably. We would hope that would occur. A $7 million, $700 million shortfall leads us to believe that things are going to become even more difficult, especially as we have rising expenses for next year. Not a lot of specific information right now. We're going to know more on Wednesday, and then as the year goes on, we'll know more. But the realities are really upon us now, and we've, we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions as a school district, as this spring lays out.
Getting back to driver's ed just briefly, I did have some conversations with Mr. Mushon, and we may rent space to a driver ed school, although we wouldn't sponsor, it wouldn't be our program per se, we may be able to rent space out to somebody that'd be interested in having a program run through Romulus Schools. It wouldn't be ours, but this would be the location of the site.
That would be possible, but it will not be run through the Romulus Schools. We are not going to get tied into someone else's employment problems, the relationship problems, nor their liability. So that's, that's a maybe. It's a real maybe. Because for somebody to come into our facilities and do an educational program, they're going to have to be way, way above reproach. I mean, I'll stand in the way of that, and as I think you would want me to do if it isn't something that's really above board. And I expect there are plenty of programs that are very good and are above board.
Madam Chairman, can I just ask one quick question? On the last paragraph of your driver's ed items of information, was there a time when, if we didn't offer driver's ed, the driver's ed private schools could get funding? Is that?
Yes.
Were we responsible for the funding?
The state, we could be responsible for, for getting, say we got $75 a child, we would then turn that over to the private schools.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that.
That went on for maybe three or four years now.
Okay, thank you.
Moving ahead, on the agenda, racetrack and casino effects on the district, again, I just wanted to talk for a few moments. I was scheduled to have a meeting with the mayor last week. He was ill, bronchitis, and we postponed the meeting. Plus, I think there's some other things going on internally in relation to the racetrack and casino over there. We will be meeting very soon with them. There's going to be revenue coming into the school district and into our city. Community would like very much for our whole harmless millage to change in a fashion of lowering that millage. We're in a very difficult financial situation, but with the proper type of negotiations and a result, it could be a win-win situation if the money is available, if these facilities come into being in our community. If we were able to become part of a deal that would provide us a revenue, it would be much easier then for us to maybe reduce and/or eliminate the whole harmless millage. So as this planning for these projects continues, we need to be involved right from the ground floor here. And I think the ground floor is about where we're at right now, because the voters made their move a number of weeks ago. Still a lot of shuffling and a lot of negotiating and a lot of legal things that have to happen before any of this becomes a reality. But we want to be in the position so that the children of Romulus gain something in terms of our programs and what goes on in the schools from these. I know we've all had conversations about this, when the election was proposed and when the campaign was going on, there were many, many folks who said that there would be benefits in this for the schools. As a group, we, we need to think about this, we need to talk about it and take a position that's the right thing for the children of this community. So we're working on that, and some of us have talked individually, and we need, we need to do more of that, and we can spend some time as a group and to chat about these items once we get a little farther into it.
Madam Chair, so you're saying, basically, if we get the racetrack, if we get the casinos, we're trying to negotiate to reduce or eliminate the whole harmless tax as a payoff or for the casinos' revenue? Are you saying that? Is that what you're telling me?
That's something that could be considered. We've made no promises to anyone in relation to these situations. We've reduced the old harmless millage, I believe, three times already. We're authorized to go as high as 16 mills, and we're charging 8.99 this year. So we have, as a result of our own prudence, have reduced it some, and as a result of some of the other kinds of millage things we've had happen for bond issues and so forth, we've reduced the millage as well. And for us to reduce that millage any further, we've got to have revenue, really. We've got to have some help. It needs to be a win-win situation. We want to win, we want to help the taxpayers, but we also are obligated to help our children. I feel very strongly about that, and as I've talked to you individually and as a group, you all want to do, what's, what's right for the kids of this community, and what's right for the kids of this community is going to cost some money.
Are we optimistic that we're going to get the casino or racetrack? I mean, because you know how with us.
Racetrack, yeah. I think the, the racetrack is pretty much on track. There's a couple of problems there that will take some time, but those folks have purchased 212 acres, I believe, at a cost of $28 million. They've sunk another million or two into planning and other stuff. They have a licensing issue to deal with, because the same company already owns a racetrack in the Muskegon area, and under the present law, you could, a single owner can only own one track. So they're on track to do one of three things there, to change the law so they can operate to, or to sell the other racing facility that they have, or to close the other racing facility they have. So they have mentioned all of those as possibilities. We'll see what happens. It's still going to take a while before anything to go into the ground and to happen. The casino is much more in jeopardy at this point in time, because the Representative Rogers from Brighton has taken a very strong position anti any casinos anywhere in the country. And a number of people in the Congress support that position, including the President of the United States. With the Republican Senate and House of Representatives and President feeling that way, that, that may be a much longer process, or who knows if it's going to happen or not.
Yeah, I know, it's a lot of other variables involved with that, too. Because it's not just the point of him selling his racetrack in Muskegon, but also he wants racinos, the slot machines, and the ball has to be changed.
And that legislation is moving.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, the racino legislation is not required in order to have them open, from what they've said.
Right.
They'll go ahead even without the racino legislation. And the racino legislation would give them the power to do more kinds of gambling there, including slot machines at the racetrack, as well as the paramutual betting and the off-track betting. So anyway, that's, it's a work in progress, and I just wanted to update everyone for a few moments today. Okay, Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Clark, members of the Board. Tonight, we have with us Tony Redmond, Tony graduate of Romulus High School. He runs our transitions program. Many years ago, we were concerned about the high rate of failure amongst our eighth-grade kids going into ninth grade, and we developed this program, and it's been how long, Tony?
Six years.
Six years. It's been a very effective program. Why don't you come up and explain? And you've got a couple of your students with you, and his lovely wife and son, who's going to try to stay up for them. You really made it exciting for your son, Tony.
Don't forget the mic.
If you don't know, Tavia, Tavia teaches at sixth grade at WIC.
If you don't know, I'm Mr. Redmond from the high school, and I'm here to present the transition program to you. My colleague Stephanie Tarfington, she can't attend tonight because due to her academic studies, she had class tonight, and she couldn't make it. And the program was really designed, as Mr. Dolan said, for struggling eighth graders coming to the ninth grades. And the program helped ease the transition for those students, so they get, you know, familiar with the high school setting. And the program focuses on three criteria: increased attendance, decreasing behavior levels, and decreasing, well, helping students with academic success in the school. And if you turn to the table of contents, and I go over this booklet, I created this booklet with a long way, Stephanie Tarfington. And as you see on page two, it's a mission statement that goes, program history, program objective, individualization, program resources, format of the program, transition tutoring class syllabus, transition Friday therapy, period discussion group, peer community mentoring, the research findings, summary of the program, and informational resources available to the community. And we also put a little video clipping together for you guys to view. I'd rather you to hear from the students as well as from me.
I like the transition program because it helps me with my work. Also, it helps me monitor my grades in class, it helps me with my work, and it gives me extra time whenever I need to do some more of my work.
Yeah, because when you go home, when you go home, you don't feel like doing all of it. And then when you come to school in the morning, you have like an extra hour to do it, and it helps your grades go up by there.
Also, the class is very small, so it gives me, it gives me more, more time to focus on most of my work.
More attention. Like, if, if the students need help, the teacher don't got to be all the way across this class, helping other people, because there's only a little amount of people.
I like the program. I like the program because I got E's like last year. That's why. I don't know why.
I like this program because it helps you pass your class, to get a good grade, and it helps you, you got to pass this class to get to your next grade.
It gives you extra help for your homework, and you get great sheets to see what your grades are, to bring them up.
I like the transition program because it helps us with our homework. It helps us stay on track. It gives us extra time to do our homework. It helps us because instead of having a big class, we will be all helped on one day. And the weekly reports help us monitor our grades, so we don't fall behind.
Well, hi, my name is Malcolm Miller, and I'm going to tell you about the tutoring program, because it really helps me out a lot. You know, you have different things to do, like you have some, some work you don't really understand, and this class is really to help you out. And then especially for your homework, you know, whenever you need it, they, they there, they always depending on you, you know? They want you to pass, they're not no type of teacher, you know what I'm saying? To sit around, and just let the kids lounge, they work themselves, you know what I'm saying? Always be prepared, behave, be on time. And then especially, you know, like, we definitely have problems with math or English, whatever, they had to help, especially, you know, it's like, help me with my work, say, okay, I got an E on my report card, well, they had to help me bring that E up into an A, you know? But then, when it's given, they give us extra time, it's a lot of work to do. Then, like, 8:30, when we be done, we have a lot of talking, you know, nothing negative, just positive thinking, positive work and all. And that's why I like tutoring, and it really helps me out a lot, very a lot.
As you can see, the camera shot is there. I've been with the program for five years, and I have seen tremendous success. I mean, I have four, last year, graduate class, sixes at a university, two at community colleges, and three within the armed forces. Like I said, it's very, I mean, I love the job, I mean, to sit there and help the kids to reach their goals. It's very, very blessing to me. I brought two, three students here with me today, they want to talk about the program.
Hi, my name is George John Garland, I'm a senior this year, and I took this class when I first got here. And the reason why I like this class is because the progress reports, progress course we get every week to make us, to make sure we don't stay off track and stuff, because when I was eighth grade, my grades was terrible, so. And then when I got to here, to the, to the program, I was on the honor roll, so that's why I like it.
Very good.
My name is Stephen Thomas, and I'm in 11th grade. And what I like most about the program is that it allows me to finish my work that I had in any other classes that I didn't get to finish. And if it was something that I needed help on, or that I was stuck on, I had teachers to fall back on, to help me out and everything. And that's what I, that's what I like most about the class, and they helped me make the honor roll that year, too. That's what I like.
Very good.
My name is Walker Thompson, I'm a senior this year. I like the class because with me wrestling and having a job and whatnot, you know, it's kind of hard for me to manage my time and come home late and do my homework and stay up till like 2:00 in the morning, working on studying. So it just gave me extra time to get it done during fifth and sixth hour, you know, and first hour, study more for tests and whatnot. It just helped me out with all my athletics and my crazy schedule, so. That's why, that's why I like the class so much. All right.
And I do want to report that Georgia, I will be going off to college in the fall. He has four, like, four colleges looking at him, four. And Walker, are you attending any colleges for me? Okay, he's going off, and he's a junior, and getting even on track right now, you know, working on some few things here, but he'd be on track by his senior year. That's my report, any questions?
Yes, go ahead.
That class is offered to kids in what grade?
Ninth grade only.
Ninth grade only?
Yes.
So the kids that you have right now that are in 11th grade, you don't see them, kids that are?
Yeah, I see them probably once a month. We sit down, we have one-on-one counseling and stuff, whatever, you know, talk about any issues they're dealing with. So I still see them. And I also prepare them for the next level.
And this is an actual class, Transition to Success?
Yes, it's a program. Your first hour, if you turn to page, let's see here, six, is it page six? It has the whole, page six. Like, see, first hour is tutoring, they go through their core classes or elective, whatever. They come back, fourth, fifth, or sixth. We take the large class during first hour, we split them up in groups, sixth, fourth hour, sixth, fifth hour, sixth, sixth hour. And we work with them on civics. Next semester would be a core class. We changed this year, actually, we taking World Affairs this year. That's a recommended credit they need to graduate.
Tony's a social worker, and then there's a teacher that works with Tony with the, how many kids do you have, Tony, 35?
No, we have, we want to keep it to 26.
And those two team with these, with these ninth grade kids. So Tony deals with behavior aspects, and the teacher deals with the tutoring aspects, and you can see the results. The results are fantastic. And you can see these gentlemen here, I'm very impressed that we've got three graduates of the program and done extremely well. And these are the kids that would have traditionally got frustrated in ninth grade. I mean, that is our most tenuous time, and perhaps dropped out or went someplace else. And we're seeing a lot of good success with the program. Tony's done a great job, and developed, working on developing a mentoring program with some of the young adults in the community to help them, and want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, I had, last year went well, but this year, I'm struggling with it, because the people that I had, they can't commit to the time for their work schedule. It's a conflict there, so what I'm working on, and I have two still committed, but I need about six to eight to be effective. So right now, it's back on the table, and I'm trying to work it and find some more.
This is a great example of, excuse me, of This is a great example of, excuse me, of board priorities and board funded programs that deal with a group of kids that we traditionally haven't served well. As you can see, it's a very, you know, it's an expensive program, but it's a program that brings all kids up. We've been doing it for six years, it's been very successful. We're real pleased with it, we really are. And a lot of these kids would not be here, would not have made it through and you can look at the data. It's been a very impressive data-driven success program in relationship to achievement and referrals. And Tony continues where he has only twenty-six kids each year. He keeps, as he keeps adding on because he keeps seeing these kids when they get into tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. Tell me something, how do you go about selecting these youngsters? Do they come to you or is it recommended by the eighth grade counselors or?
By the eighth grade counselor.
Okay.
And we get a whole list and what I do with Ms. Carpenter, my colleague, we go through the list and we take the most needed student and we work with them and grab them in.
Okay, so these children, so these youngsters then, if, what if one of them didn't want to attend this?
Well, they don't have to be a part because we have a large number.
Yeah.
You see, we get about close to forty every year. We only take twenty-six.
And apparently you do have the cooperation of all the parents out there.
Right, right.
Okay.
That was my question.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Breakdown, male, females, fifty percent, sixty percent?
No, about ninety percent males and ten percent females.
And what happens to those ones who cannot get into the program? If you take twenty-six and you got fifty, what happens to the other twenty-four?
Well, what, what Dan wanted me to do is try to contact, you know, work with them during other hours. So, that's what I tried to do, give them some type of support. That's all I can do, I mean, not too much more I can do. So, with the counselor work with me, we kind of identify some students and we work together.
One of, one of our visions that Tony and I had and, you know, we have talked to you about it, is try to expand the mentorship in the community, try to get community. He's tried, but it's been more of a challenge than we had thought.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Tony, mentors, how much do you need, males, females or both? How much time is needed? Can you explain to me a little bit?
I need about, what I want is for them to come into the school for one hour. And I give them my office and they can build a relationship upon that, you know? And I go through the guidelines with them and I tell the mentors and mentees what I want, what I'm looking for. So, and I give them my office and they sit down, they build a relationship. Now, in one case, I had a parent want one of the mentors on Saturdays, take her daughter out, her daughter's really struggling with, you know, the normal teenage adolescent behavior. And she met with her every Saturday, they went out to movies and dinner and stuff like that and talk about teenage issues. That worked very well, but unfortunately she moved to North Carolina, so I lost her, you know?
So, we're not talking, we're talking an hour a day or just the time that you can spend? I'm just trying to get a feel for.
I need an hour, hour. What I usually do, I pair two mentees with one mentor. That's right, and I take everybody that don't need it, you know, you understand? I take the most severe case.
So, you're saying an hour a week or?
Well, see, I have each, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I have.
Hour a day, hour a week.
Well, it's every day but different men, hour a week, hour a week, I'm sorry, hour a week.
Okay, that's what I am. I'm just trying to help you out if I can possibly.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
Get some volunteers here.
See what we can do to help you out.
Right. So, any more questions?
Your office is at the high school, so if they have any questions, they can call you.
Right, right.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's very good to see they follow through the way we have.
Right, right.
Our, our goal is to give students the best shot they can and if that shot doesn't work, we give them a second chance, another chance and so forth. And we're very happy with that. Those who've been with the program a few years are doing so well. We support you and your continued efforts.
Yeah, I'm impressed, good job, guys. Got a wrestler out there, Celeste, huh?
Last year, you're not wrestling this year, are you? I think so, yeah. We miss you, we need you out there.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cruz will take some pictures out in the hallway and good luck, thank you. Mr. Dolan, MLK.
MLK Day. We have met a couple of times with the Reverend Willis in the city and we have an active committee and we have sent this out to, I think all of you have got the handout and we've sent it out to all the teachers and all the politicians and all the religious communities and all the churches and we're set to go. Ms. Wafer's taking care of the singing and dancing component of it. We've got the food donated, the walk is set. Reverend Willis is taking care of the ceremonies. Who's in charge of collecting the cupcakes? Ross, that, this is, the yellow one is Shelley, that's it, that's Friday. Oh, yep, it is, Mayor Menelmann. This is Shelley wanted to invite you all to her, to her thing on Friday and Mayor Menelmann. This is the one for Monday. So, I get in touch with her for cupcakes. Well, Ellen Bragg is doing the community sing. She really desperately needs additional singer, so if any of you want to volunteer, Mr. Woods, or know of, or know of people that might volunteer, that would be helpful. We're hoping and we would encourage you to encourage people that you're familiar with in churches or in the community to come out there. We want to continue this tradition and we think it's a, it's a nice tradition. We have had a positive response from a number of the politicians in the area who plan on attending, so hopefully the weather will be with us and let's go for it. Oh, I hope so.
Very good, very good.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Tom, this is excellent, in fact, I've, I know it's been read in my church and frankly, just trying to get the word out there to come and celebrate, so this is great. Real happy about this.
Ms. Wafer's going to lead the walk, is that what you heard?
Ah. Alrighty then.
Very good, thank you, Tom. The next item is really for your information. We talked about the athletic, family athletic passes. We have something that's in place now and hopefully we'll provide the kind of encouragement to help families to really participate in our athletic program as spectators and make it so it is affordable for folks who really want to come out. It is very expensive, it's four dollars times three or four people each evening, but for forty-five dollars, you can come out for an awful lot of nights of entertainment and days of entertainment that are very wholesome, very nice and something that's a good thing, we think, for our community. So, that's, that's in place and ready, we're taking advantage of it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, since there's no communication or expression from the public, we will move right along.
Items of interest from the superintendent. You notice a letter from Hoon Young Hopgood relative to some of the work we've been doing on financing. The other items are really self-explanatory. We've had some individual discussion on some of these. You also noticed the item relative to Martin Luther King Day and working with the union. Other than that, it's quite self-explanatory and entertain questions if you might have them.
Okay, questions and concerns from the board, Mr. Wood.
Madam Chair, the counseling department, who have we got to replace Mr. Dumas?
We have just selected an applicant, matter of fact, it's one of our current teachers at the high school, Ms. Latoya Peoples Shackleford. She's going to be taken in Mr. Dumas' position.
Good, good.
Very good. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman. We don't need to bring that forward, excuse me, we don't need to bring that forward because this is merely a transfer of a person within our employee.
But then we need somebody to fill her job eventually.
We're in the process now, that position's been posted, we have some good candidates that we're looking at.
The envelope we received from Henry Ford Hospital or Henry Ford Health System, you know, and it was basically an advertisement to buy books, but do they use these in the school system at all about tobacco and?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I, I didn't know if, if we gave you these and you gave each one to a school or something. I mean, for us, you know, it's, it's a good idea, but I don't see where we can use the booklet. I'm just saying, you know, if, if somebody wants it and they want to give it out to one of the schools to use or something, you know, they're welcome to mine. The other question I had was where are we at with food service? Have we had any meetings with the higher-ups from Sedexo or to address the concerns we had earlier?
We did meet with the Sedexo staff this afternoon, Mr. Clark and myself. The current manager that was in place prior to the, the holiday recess is on a medical leave, but he won't return. He'll return to some facility in Sedexo, but not with Ramona School District. And there is a transition person there. They're going through the process of screening applicants and will eventually hire a permanent person to fill that assignment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
We do need a brief executive session, but I put emphasis on brief.
Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion, not me going to an executive session.
Support.
Okay.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Minkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Woods? Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Lenasi?
Yes.
Ms. Frey, yes.
There will be no action taken after the executive session.
Ms. Frey, yes.
Motion to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Forward. Who was that?
I didn't.
Support.
Yeah, I remember you.
On favor?
Aye.
Proposed? This meeting is adjourned.